All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting of November 5th, 2020. And I'd like to remind everyone to please silence any electronic devices. For those who are attending virtually, please mute your microphones while not speaking. At this time, I'd like to ask you to all please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Michael Cox.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Roberto Sias.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Okay, well, the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. The Planning Commission serves as a local planning agency, and the Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, Land Development Code amendments, rezonings and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Under minutes, there will be no minutes read today or approved. So will we be modifying those minutes just for your...
Mr. Chair Denise Hernandez, if you would just put a motion.
I'd like to withdraw. I'd like to have a motion to withdraw the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to withdraw the minutes.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Jamie Girardi, and the second was by who?
Chris Williams.
By Chris Williams. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Roll call vote, okay.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams. And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
I'm sorry, they didn't mention my name.
You can't hear Michael and Roberto very much. It's very quiet. Are they got your microphones on?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better. That's better. Michael, try your mic again.
Can you hear me now? Yep.
Yeah. You're not loud, but I can hear you.
I haven't... I didn't hear the clerk mention my name.
Yeah. Did you read Roberto's name, please?
Roberto Sias.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We're all set then. So Denise, is there any public comment scheduled for that's not on the agenda today?
No, there is no public comment.
Okay. All right, then. Participants attending through the public comment kiosk, those instructions, there's no point to go through those.
We do have two participants who are at the public comment kiosk, but four IDPC10.
Okay. So participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants, including the applicants who have pre-registered for the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting, will be notified by the county staff when they're permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes, and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved and has not been. Participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants must announce the following items before speaking, and at the time they will be sworn in by the clerk: their name, their address, their agenda item, or the agenda title item. Then they will have their appropriate time to speak. After public comment, after public comment, kiosk and WebEx participants will read into the public record comments, documents, PowerPoints, or videos that have been identified by members of the public to be read out loud or played. The time limited to five minutes for applicants and three minister for participants. We have six public hearing items on the consent agenda. And they will go through the agenda items, and then, once we finish the consent agenda, we'll vote on it en masse by roll call. Okay. Madam Clerk, you want to read proof of publication?
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on October 21st, 2020.
Okay. Yes, Denise, go ahead.
Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development, we're going to... We're going to go out, we're... Firstly, we're going to go in order, but I do want to direct you to PC9. I'm going to read PC9 together with the continuance. Item PC3 is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, village passing the notes proposed visualized use amendment for Chapter 2, both mutual awareness and context, and figure PHA revisions for reserve, village separated provisions, and existing development approvals, that's PDB 210002. It's a request for continuance to the number 19, 2020, local planning agencies, you're sitting as a local planning agency on this one, at 1:30 PM in Portage.
All right. Do I hear a motion to continue?
I move to continue. Chris Williams.
And do I have a second?
Oh, second to Peter Hansel.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion of the motion? All in favor, by roll call, say aye. Both say no.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox. Peter Hansel. Roberto Sias.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Following item PC4 is PDB 210001, it's an ordinance in Castle County Board of County Commissioners, and the Land Development Code, Section 602, this item is also a request for continuance to the number 19, local planning agency, at 1:30 PM in Portage.
All right, thank you. And there's no one here to speak on this one?
No one's here to speak.
So do I hear a motion, please? To continue?
I'll move to continue, PC4.
Second, Chris Poole.
Okay, motion by Jamie Girardi, second by Chris Poole. All in favor of the motion, motion signified by saying aye by roll call? Or no?
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Sias.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Our amendment is PC5, PDB 217503, this is LLC acquisition, LLC and Chelsea acquisition to LLC for change in zoning from R4 High Density Residential District and C1 Neighborhood District to an MF2 Multiple Family Medium High Density District. This, there is a request by the applicant to continue to December 10, 2020, Planning Commission Meeting at 1:30 in Date City.
Okay, and there's no one to speak on this one?
No one's to speak on the side.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the continuance?
I move, Chris Williams.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Jamie Girardi.
Okay. Any further discussion of the motion? All right. Then signify by saying aye or nay, or by roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Sias.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Next, we're going to move on to PC9. PC9 is PDB 21C user or needs a conditional use for Adventist Health Systems, Sunbelt Healthcare Corporation, for local family dwellings in a C2 general commercial district. The applicant has requested a continuance to the December 10, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting at 1:30 in Date City.
Okay, we have a request for continuance.
I'll make the motion.
...because this was not advertised as a continuance, there was no one on WebEx to speak on the matter, and there was no one at the kiosk on the matter either.
Okay. And this continued to the Date City meeting?
Yes, 12/10/2020 Planning Commission Meeting at 1:30 in Date City.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve continuance.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second, Chris Williams.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye by roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Sias.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
For now, we'll move on to item PC7, PC6, it's actually a Land Development Code amendment. It's going to take some time, so let's go through our public hearings, we do have applicants present, and we'll work to write the rest of the consent. So, the following item on consent is PC7, it's an amendment, PDB 217502, in the name of First Castle Service Corporation, for a change in zoning from I1 Light Industrial Park District to C2 General Commercial District. It comes to with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, and that stays on consent?
It's on consent.
Okay.
The applicant is virtually present.
All right. Any applicant have any comment?
There is no one here to object, so if you have questions for the applicant, the applicant can answer.
Okay, are there any questions? I hear none, so move on.
Do you want me to move on to the next one?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The following item is PC8, it's PDB 21C user or seven, in the name of CEO of Farm State, Oil Auction Group for public auction in a C2 general commercial district, comes to with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained to the applicant. The applicant is virtually present, and we do not have anyone on WebEx or at the kiosk to check up.
All right. Any questions from the guys? If not, do I hear a motion? Is that the last one?
That's the last one.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Chris Poole. I'll second it, Peter Hansel.
Okay. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye by roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Sias.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the following item, and I'll share my presentation on it.
Okay, good afternoon. This is Christina Acosta from Planning and Development. The next item is PDB 21-7501, in the name of Charles Gilbert Tucker. The request is for a change in zoning from R1 Rural Residential, Rural Density Residential District to an AR1 Agricultural Residential District. The property is located on the east side of Connor Drive, approximately 1,750 feet south of the intersection of Cypress Lane and Dupree Drive. The site contains approximately 5.46 acres, and the applicant proposes to develop the site in conformance with the AR1 Agricultural Residential District standards for development. And the surrounding area is characterized by residential uses. The future land use for the site is RES6, residential six dwelling units per acre. And this is a look at the surrounding zoning. To the east side, you have the Dupree Lakes MPUD. To the west side of the site, you have all R1. And to the south, you have a mix of R1 and AR1. Let me do the next slide. Thanks. And the access to the site is from Connor Drive, actually dead ends just past the site. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval. And I'm here for any questions you have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the guys? Chris?
So, I know there's, with some of the comment I've seen about Orange Grove and stuff like that, what can they not? And I don't even know what they're looking to do, but can they, can they not do Orange Grove on their current zoning, or pine trees, or what? What's the limitations of their current zoning?
So it's...
Go ahead.
I can tell you, it's the intention of the applicant to rezone the property so he can do agricultural uses that would qualify him for the agricultural exemption.
So under his current zoning, he can't do that?
No.
So I do want to mention, we do have a letter in opposition to be read into the record, and the applicant is physically present at the kiosk. So would you like me to read the letter first, or so that way the applicant can respond?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do it. Yep.
So if someone can please set the time, this is about three minutes. So this...
I have it, Denise.
Denise, can I, can I interrupt you just, just for one moment?
Yeah.
Is there anyone present on WebEx to speak on this item?
No, there isn't anyone present on WebEx. So yes, Ms. Todd Sandra stated that if she would be present, she can state it, but she's, she is not present on WebEx, so we're reading the letter.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Denise.
Sure, no problem. Thank you so much. This is from Lizette Alexander, who lives on Connor Drive. I will be out of town tomorrow during the hearing, and wish to have this information read at the meeting, and the event, and I am unable to connect online during the session. The neighbors on King Lake have been advised that Mr. Charles Gilbert Tucker of Connor Drive has recently applied on rezoning this property from the current R1 Residential to AR1 Agricultural Residential. R1 is a primary farm residential zoning catering to sick family residences. Such zoning is considered more peaceful and desirable by owners and prospective buyers. A change to AR1 will allow commercial farming and agricultural activities such as citrus groves, as well as other fruits, forestry planters, tree, truck farms, fish pools, animal feedlots, matching and raising agriculture, reduction of eggs, raising livestock, cocks, horses, cattle, sheep, et cetera. The former, the further, we further understand that once the land is rezoned, there is no oversight. Any and all items under AR1 will be committed. My family and I are concerned about the ill effects that we suffer if the rezoning is granted. These issues, these include, but are not limited to, what problems would the added stress of trees, livestock, and their runoffs have on the lake, wetlands, or the aquifer? Animal waste pesticides, and use of fertilizers would most assuredly impact the water quality of all three. Neighbors on the lake just spent approximately $50,000 collectively treating our lake for hydrilia after working closely with the appropriate environmental agents. If this rezoning is approved, our efforts and sacrifice would be all for naught. What effect would there be from the planting of a grove? The land in question can sustain approximately 545 trees. Citrus laden trucks can tear up the road. Commercialization would bring additional people traffic down the cul-de-sac. What will be effect on the wetlands that border this upper property? Our neighborhood is made up of residential single-family homes, the preponderance of the properties on the lake are zoning R1. We are hardworking people who care about our land and our neighborhood, and are convinced that changes to the zoning as requested would have negative consequences for us all. We respectfully ask that you disapprove the request for rezoning. Thank you. This is Lizette Alexander.
Okay, well, we can't ask any questions because they're not available.
Well, that's true. But I'd like to ask some questions, if I may.
I have some questions, too, sir.
Okay.
So the applicant is also available, so perhaps, you know, he's at the kiosk.
Do you want to have the applicants respond first and then ask questions?
Well, it might be helpful if we, if I ask the questions first before the applicants can respond.
All right. It's finally me, yeah.
Well, I had several questions that, I have a shorter letter from Ms. Alexandria, and she brought up the cost of maintaining the road in her document to, to us. And, and on the first page of the agenda memo, it talks about that road being maintained by the county. Is that going to be an issue down the road if this, because with agricultural activities going on, heavier equipment may come in? So that's one question, and the road. And the second, I think she has a legitimate complaint here regarding chemical use. I'm not a farmer, nor do I pretend to be one in any fashion or manner, but I do know that, from common knowledge, that agricultural business does use an enormous amount of chemicals. And she brings up the fact that in this letter, that they do have a concern regarding, I guess there's some streams, because she refers, well, the aquifer, which is the underground water, but there must be some type of runoff system or some type of watering in that area. When I pull up on the map, the map that I pull up on Google, it shows some type of, I think, some small streams in there, if I can even use that term. I don't think they're that, that large. But that's my main concern, is the chemical use in going into the water system there. And who maintains the road, other than the county? Is there going to be a cost, additional burden to the residents in this area? So those are the areas I'm concerned about.
Right, so, so definitely Connor Drive is a county, Castle County maintaining the road. In terms of repaving it or anything like that, that's, you know, usually that's done through a paving assessment.
Cost sharing, okay.
My understanding, and from driving down the road, the road is, like, the actual pavement of the road is in good condition. It's not pothole ridden, or depressions, and things like that. It's not a very wide road, certainly towards the end, but the road is generally in good condition.
In her document that I have, it says it's been repaved several times, and it's considerable expense. I'm not sure what the term, or what she means by considerable expense, but when was the last time it was repaved, and is there, is it expensive to repay that the road?
If our transportation folks can answer that question, we'll certainly look that up, as to when the last time it went through paving assessment.
Then what about chemicals?
The chemicals, I think we can ask the applicant that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So can we hear from the applicants?
We have one on...
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Chris has some questions. Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it seems to me that this, this request is out of context for the, for the area and the zoning that's surrounding the area there. You know, I see in the, to follow up on Chris's point, I do see in the, in the public comment that we received, there's, it's like some conflicting information. It seems like one, one resident suggested it's going to be pine trees that can be planted there versus orange grove. So I think, you know, information from the applicant is their planned uses, and then what they, what they plan to do in the future, what that would be, would be very helpful.
So if we can get the applicant at the kiosk, please?
Good afternoon.
Would you please, would you please state your name and address for the record? And you need to be sworn in as well.
Charles Gilbert Tucker, 5102 Connor Drive, Landalake, Florida.
Sir, could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is a truth to help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Chris, why don't you go ahead with your questions, too, and get them all maybe addressed at one time?
Sure. Well, my question is regards to, the request seems out of context for the, for the area where this, this property is located. So I see in some of the public comment that was received by the Planning Commission that there's disagreement in the, the future use of the property, whether it's going to be planted for pine trees, or orange grove, or the likes. So, sir, could you clarify your, your planned use of the property going forward?
Yes, sir. A lot of, a lot of the neighbors' fears and all, see, I'm a third-generation citrus grower, and my grandfather and, and my dad and I, we've owned this property for over 70 years now, and which we sold out in 2005 to Beazer Home, which is Dupree Lakes. And at that time, we had 640 acres there, and 350 acres of it were in orange grove. And we were producing anywhere from 100,000 to 150,000 boxes of juice oranges every year going to Tropicana. But when we sold out and sold to Beazer Homes, we, this piece of land that I live on was a section that we separated from that 644 acres that I kept. And I kept the amount enough for to do this in the proceedings down the road, like that there, to, to put it back in agriculture. I have no desire of, I don't have the land to get back into the commercial business like we had way back there and through all those years of grove like that there. I don't have, there's not enough upland to put back in orange grove. I'm only interested in putting it back in the pine trees like it was once before, and then building me a shed there, and, you know, a few other kinds of trees, oak trees, this, that, and the other. There's a canal that borders the north side of my property that possibly line with Cypress trees to help erosion, against erosion there and all like that there, so. And I did, years ago, we did a video for the Department of Agriculture, which is accessible through the extension office with IFIS and all, on pesticides and building buffers from getting in any of our wetlands or lakes that we had in the grove, which is all now Dupree Lakes. Years ago, my grandfather had armored corps engineers come in there and had all of that connected, and we were able to maintain, keep any pesticides or whatever out of those wetlands or anything else. But I have no desire to do that, or anything like that. I just want to put it back in agriculture and pine trees. I have, I'm a single, full-time, single father with two sons that are just 15 and 20 years old, and I want them to, my youngest one is Southport Landalakes High School. He's joined the Future Farmers Association there with the school, and I'm just wanting to assure that, you know, oh, he, he has something, a project to do with, Future Farmers there, while his last three years in schooling there, he's allowed to do it there and stuff. Besides that, I want to plant the pine trees. I talked to one of the neighbors the other night, and he said, I'd sure like to see it back in the pine trees the way it was before. So this about, and the cost of the roads, we endured that cost of the road for almost a mile, because the first section was Connor Drive, and then the section, section was Dupree, which circles around there. And our family had to pay for the road because our property bordered the east side of all those roads around there. So we, we participated in that also, like that there. But I have no intentions of doing, I, I have deer sleep outside my bedroom window, and I want to keep the deer there. I, I don't want, you know... I, I don't want, you know, I'm just trying to, that land, Pasco County, see, that land was separated from the seven hundred acres. Okay, I can't separate it no more. You can only split a piece of land in Pasco County one time, so I can't sell it. I'm mowing it regularly, I keep it mowed and, and all like that there, and I would just like to, to be able to put it back in trees and, and get, be able to qualify for the tax break on it. I have no, no plans of nothing else.
So, so understanding that, so you have no, no desire in a commercial use or commercial enterprise related to that, it seems like your neighbors are confused with, with your plan as to how you're going to use the property. But that being said, it, it, you know, not having the commercial aspect to the, to the project certainly makes it more viable, I guess, I guess to me as a planning commissioner to, to approve this. But, you know, I, I think there is some miscommunication, I guess, with, with your neighbors. That being said, would you be interested in, in, I don't know if I can ask this Denise, but some sort of consent order related to, to the, the motion? Could we, could we commit that to a non-commercial use or something of that sort? Would that be an opportunity? Yes, exactly, yep.
So, planning commission, this is David Goldstein. That would have to be in the form of a deed restriction offered by the applicant. This is not a type of zoning that you can condition. So if the applicant is willing to, to offer up a deed restriction that limits this to non, a non-commercial farming operation, that would be up to the applicant to offer that up.
All right, thank you, David. So if I could, if I could, we could ask the applicant, is he willing to accede to deed restriction?
I'm, may I, can I, may I come in and say something? I am working with the applicant.
You're going to have to, going to come up and give your name, address?
My name, my name is Joe Seidel. I live at 20955 Lake Thomas Road in Land O'Lake.
Okay. And go ahead and get me sworn in.
I swear.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a truth to help you God?
Yes. You don't know me, I've lived in Land O'Lake for thirty-eight years. Charlie has been my neighbor. I knew his grandfather, I, as I had, as I knew his father, I knew Charlie. I'm a commercial real estate agent, I started out in farmland. I come from a farm area, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, so ag is kind of a little bit in my blood. I've lived in a neighborhood of Land O'Lake, like I said, for thirty-eight years. I watched a citrus grove next door turn into a subdivision. I watched a, a pine forest tree farm across the street turn into a subdivision. Mr. Tucker here is, has been a friend of mine for thirty-plus years. I believe him when he says that he will do a non-commercial use. I guess the question I would have, I'm trying to help Mr. Tucker, he's asked me to help him, in the idea of, let's make this non-commercial, having a tree farm, he's going to sell the pines, is that considered commercial? I don't think it's his, he can tell me if I'm wrong, I don't think it is his intention to run a truck farm out of there to make it, as he said, he's not going to make it a grove. We've seen Pasco County, as you well know, was a predominantly agricultural area, was one of the best citrus-growing areas in the state. Part of the reason is because of the soils. We can produce fruit here faster than just about any, any other place in the state, which is hard to believe, but it's true. Unfortunately, with freezes and greening, citrus industry is gone, and it's not coming back anytime soon, as you well know. So Mr. Tucker's not trying to do that. I understand the neighbor's objections. If I was living on that street, those things would come, they would cross my mind as well. As far as him restricting it to commercial uses, again, if it's saying that you can plant pines, that's not a commercial use. Yet, if we're saying you can't plant your pine trees, and you can't have a, you know, I have beautiful citrus in my own yard, you know, I had half a dozen. I had one tree that had five different varieties of fruit on it for forty years, you know, we grafted it on there. All that's gone. So I guess the question, Mr. Goldstein, would be, if he says no commercial, does that mean he can't have?
Well, so, so, yeah, I tend to agree with the applicant. The, the term commercial is a little bit ambiguous, because if he sells one tree, arguably that's commercial. I think if the planning commission, if, if your desire is to limit it to a pine tree farm, you could ask for a deed restriction that limits it to a pine tree farm. Or if your desire is to limit the use of pesticides on the land, then you could ask for a deed restriction that limits the use of pesticides. But the problem with the phrase "commercial" is it, I think, we may have issues if he goes to sell one tree, and then arguably that's a commercial operation. So I think the, the motion maker, or the, or the, the planning commission member that has concerns probably needs to clarify whether your issue is trying to limit it to just pine trees or limit to use of pesticides. You probably, we need some clarity as to what your real goal is.
Okay. Chris, you want to clarify your thinking on that?
Well, I think, you know, in, in, in my mind, an orange grove is a completely different thing than a pine tree farm. So an orange grove is a commercial enterprise that's going to, is going to be pesticide application, there's going to be, you know, water requirements for, for watering the groves and like to, to keep it viable and the like. So I think there's, that's kind of where my mind goes on the, on commercial enterprise. I think if we're talking about a pine tree farm, and that, that was my, my reason for the question to the applicant, to see if that's the case, because I think in my mind, that's a completely different, different scenario as far as an agriculture use for the property goes, and I would be inclined to, to support that sort of use.
If we said a non-commercial citrus grove, or, or, yeah, no commercial citrus grove?
Okay, so is the applicant asking to limit it to a pine tree farm or a non-commercial citrus grove? Is that what you're asking? I'm not sure if I understand the request.
Yes, the thing is, he still wants to have a couple of citrus trees and, and, but, but to say, we'll restrict it to a non-commercial citrus grove. Then it's not a citrus, it's not a commercial grove operation, but if he limited it strictly to pine trees, and then he grows half a dozen citrus trees for his family and friends, are we going to be back here later on?
So, so, yeah, so my recommendation, if that's your intent, would be to limit it to a pine tree farm or a non, or a non-commercial farming operation. So your pine tree farm, you'd be able to sell the pine trees, but any other form of farm, I mean, you wouldn't be able to sell, it would just be for personal use.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So is that, is that acceptable to the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Hey, are you willing to enter into a deed restriction that limit, makes a limitation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would that address the planning commission's concerns?
I, I think it addresses my concerns.
It addresses my theory, yes, sir.
You, you okay?
I'm a little confused. So you're saying limit, he, he wants to grow?
He wants to plant pine trees, and if he wants to plant these citrus trees.
Just the number of.
For his personal use.
For personal use, say, no more, not to exceed more than ten orange trees.
Well, I don't like that number.
Denise?
Well, I don't.
This is Jamie Girardi, can I ask a question? If, if the applicant wanted to plant, is there a limit on the number of pine trees and citrus trees he could plant on his property as it's owned currently? Though really the issue comes down to being able to get the tax benefit of going to AR.
Right.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's Michael Cox. So I understand everybody's concern, but reality, the, the fact is, this is like a, not even a five and a half acre piece of land. If it was a fifty acre piece of land, I could understand going through all those gyrations of putting deed restrictions on it, but it's a small piece of land. This is, I think, a first for me, someone opposing, someone wanting to do a zoning change because they want to plant trees. So, I mean, I personally think it's fine the way it is, and we should approve it.
All right.
So I just want to make sure we're clear, though, and I'm going to ask Denise a question. What, because we keep talking about the planting of trees, are there other types of agricultural operations that are allowed in AR-1 that are not planting of trees, such as far, chickens, poultry, those types of operations?
Denise, on the PowerPoint, there's a, there's a slide included at the end that has all the uses of AR-1, if you want to put it up.
So, sorry, just wanted to be clear, that's why I wanted this to be pulled up, because I want you to understand that AR-1 allows more than just the planting of trees. It does allow swine, fowl, small animals. So this isn't just a tree issue. I just wanted to make sure we're clear.
Yeah, I think that's, that's why your idea of, you know, limited to non-commercial uses is probably the best, the best way to put it, rather than limited the number of trees, but I'm open to, I just think, well, sort of think like Mike does, you know, it's hard to turn down somebody that wants to plant trees, you know, and that, and when I looked at the aerial, it looks like the, that five acres is across the street from the lake, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
So it, I don't think anything would run off from that end of the lake directly unless I'm, unless I can't see something that's there, but anyway, I'm, I'm open to a motion if, unless you, unless any of you have more questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is Michael Cox, I'll move for approval.
I'll second the approval.
I just want, I just want to clarify, get the, is that with the assumption of the deed restriction that the applicant?
No.
Or, or without it?
No.
Without?
Committed by staff.
So, so assuming no deed restriction?
Correct.
That's correct. You've already clarified that he can actually plant as many trees as he wants there right now, right? So, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by roll call, aye or nay?
Jamie Girardi?
Aye.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Roberto Sais?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Nay.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray?
Aye.
Okay, just for the record, it appears that there's some export communications. Mr. Hansel, we received an email from Ms. Lisette. Did anyone else receive an email?
I came in my packet.
Oh, that was sent, okay, perfect. Okay, that isn't your topic, thank you so much, I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so the last item. Let me share with you. All right, so the last item on your agenda is PDD 2100024, which is the next set of glitch amendments, Land Development Code Amendment 45, minor fixes. As you all know, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the restated Land Development Code in 2011, according to 1115, and there have been forty-four adopted amendments to the code since that time. More contemplated than there would be need, a need for some minor fix amendments to address issues and address some concerns with implementation that may arise. On October 21st, the following amendments were presented to the interested parties meeting, horizontal roundtable and vertical roundtable group. So we're going to go over, some of them are very, very specific, but we'll go over each and every single section. So we're making amendments to Chapter 300 Procedures, Table 303-5, required public hearings and development approvals. The reason for that change is because we're adding unified sign plans to go to the, which goes to the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. It's not anything new, it's just something that was in, in that table for development approval applications. We're also adding the waiver of specific distance of a thousand feet for on-premises consumption for alcoholic beverages to the required public hearing table. Again, these are not new processes, these are processes that have always existed, it's just wasn't in the justice table. Following change is 300 Procedures, 304-1, required public notice for development approval applications. As we go through this, you'll, you will see that one of the, one of the big changes that we made to the code is that you will no longer see conditional uses for the sale of alcoholic beverages. These will be done through administrative approval. It's something that the Board of County Commissioners has wanted us to do for a long time. We've now made some changes to the code, so you're going to see this as a recurring theme throughout, based on other change. Once you change a part of the code, you have to change other parts of the code. So basically now, the required public notice for development approval, development approval applications is going to include the administrative use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, where that you have to post, post the item. Also, it adds a unified sign plan, where it has to be mailed, published, and posted. It adds the waiver of the specific distance of a thousand feet for the sale of alcoholic beverages to be mailed and posted. It also clarifies, we have, we have wireless communications facilities called out as wireless facilities. There were some quotes, some legislative changes in 2017, that name was changed to wireless communications facilities, our code still says wireless facilities. Again, you're going to see this being throughout, it's deterred by, most of them are minor modifications. So again, at Chapter 300 Procedures, Section 305 Neighborhood Meeting, changes the name of wireless facilities again to wireless communications facilities. This is consistent with the changes that were made in Land Development Code Amendment 30, and for changes that were made in the 2017 legislative session. Chapter 300 Procedures, Section 306 Neighborhood Notice, it clarifies that alternative standards other than those in 407.5C and 407.5D, the notice for those can also be provided in conjunction or in connection with other notices, which can include PSP or PEP. The way that it's written right now, it, it's very confusing to staff, it is very confusing to our applicants, where the applicant is saying, "Oh my God, do I have to notice this separately?" And it doesn't necessarily have to be noticed separately, it can be noticed in conjunction with the PSP or the PEP or the masquerade or whatever other process that the applicant may be going through. Chapter 400 Permit Types and Applications, and please stop me if you have any questions, I apologize, I tend to be very fast and I realize that, so please stop me, stop me if you have any questions, I'm very happy to answer them. Chapter 400 Permit Types and Applications, Section 402.3F, conditional uses, required standards, it removes the section of the thousand foot from places of religious worship, pre-clipped cages through twelve grade, um, private schools and county parks. It moves all that, and you're, you're going to see, it's, it's going to be a theme throughout, this is now all going to be consolidated in 402, 405.2. D. It doesn't, it doesn't remove the requirement, it just consolidates it into one section. So alcohol will be called out as a whole in one, in one section, which is in 402, 405.2. D. All right, Chapter 400 Permit Types and Applications, Section 402.3. H, 2. C, this is the conditional use section. So again, this section has language regarding alcohol, all that language, it's not going away, it's just moving to 402.5. D, administrative use permits for the sale of alcoholic beverages. Chapter 400 Permit Types and Applications, Section 402.3. I, enforcement, there's a square here, there's error, the, the actual, it should be calling out 402.4. J, not 402.4. I. Chapter 400 Permit Types and Applications, Section 402.4. J, replication of special exception and conditional uses. We're renaming this section because we now have the administrative use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, which is also re- which is also revocable, so we're just adding that, the, the name is changing to, um, special revocation, special conditional uses and administrative use permits for the sale of alcoholic beverages. Section four oh two point five point eight point one, mobile food operations. This is as a result of preemption language in Florida statute of two thousand and twenty. Um, so basically it clarifies that, um, registration is no longer required for, um, mobile food operations. And we, there was also a spriggers error from the time that we, uh, brought the four oh two point five point eight point one, which is mobile food operations. It clarifies the language on construction sites, so those are two changes to make to that. Here's where we start talking about meat. Session four oh two point five point D, administrative use permits for the sale of alcoholic beverages, this creates that new section. It brings all the other items in, from the other sections into the section, um, which includes, uh, the waiver information is moved. Uh, now the planning commission is going to be the decision-making body on the waivers, so you may hear waivers from time to time where there might be an alcoholic beverage business establishment wanting to, um, open within less than a thousand feet as the pro applies from a, um, a county park, a place of religious worship, or a pre-plate through twelve grade, um, private or public school. So that, the waiver was previous, those were previously, um, heard and, um, the final action was made by the Board of County Commissioners, that's now against the planning commission. So it also moves, and all the items that were in five thirty point one four, which used to be called or is called the applicability of this code, code to the sale of alcoholic beverages, again, everything is in one section, it moves it to four oh two point five point D. Um, okay, uh, something else that four oh two point five point D clarifies, we did see that throughout the code, there were mentions of church, places of worship, schools, and it wasn't clarified. So what we did is that, you know, a church is a place of religious worship, so is, so are some other things, so that, the place of religious worship is a defined term in our land development code, so we're using that term throughout, place of religious worship. Also, we wanted to clarify this, that school, that means a pre-plate through twelve grade, public or private school. And we wanted to clarify the park, means the county park. So it's more clear, it's, it's clearer for the person who's reviewing it, and it's clearer for, um, our, our customers as well. It also adds an enforcement section, um, which is, uh, which was in another location in the code, but enforcement for the administrative use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages. So the following section four oh six point five point I, right, we use permit on requirement. If, um, the maintenance guarantee is moved from one year to thirty-six months. In speaking with the folks, um, at project management and engineering inspections, that's what, that's what's done in the field thirty-six months. So that, that change is being made to the code, so that way it follows current practice. Section five oh three point three AC and cultural district, conditional use. This, um, this section, it's, it's just basically add specific distance waiver language for conditional use. So as you may recall, we processed at one point a conditional use, um, in conjunction with an amusement facility, it just basically sets states, unless a specific distance limitation waiver is approved, they can't, they can't sell within a thousand feet of a place of religious worship, eight through twelve, public or private school, so on and so forth. This is the only place that those, there will, there will still be a conditional use for alcoholic beverages, because there's other things to take into consideration. This is going to be in an AC district, hours, hours of operation and different things like that. So the conditional use will still be in conjunction with the operation of an unused, an amusement facility. So section five eleven RMH, which is the mobile park district, and, um, this, so when the board asked us to allow site of homes in RMH, it was really for existing properties that were zoned RMH. So this basically clarifies that single-family detached homes on individual lots are only permitted on parcel zoned RMH prior to December eighth, twenty twenty. The reason why we stated December eighth, twenty twenty is because that will be the adoption date of, of this item. Um, that way you will not, you will no longer see, um, applications for RMH with deed restrictions stating that they're not going to have mobile homes. So that's not the reason for RMH, the reason for RMH is existing RMH lots. So it's an unintended consequence of land development code amendment twenty-seven, which was in two thousand seventeen or so. The following section, and it's, it's really interesting, because a lot of the things that are going to continue to come about are things that have, that were first presented to the planning commission. So section five seventeen, R four high-density residential district, I don't know if you recall, in January of this year, we brought forward a variance where an R four subdivision, uh, was reducing their side setbacks to five feet. And we explained that this is something we were going to change in the code because there are standards in nine oh two point two point eight point two point B for lot drainage, for lots that have less than a seven and a half of side setback. So we're basically, um, making, bringing that change as we stated in January when we brought in that variance. So it allows a setback to be reduced to no less than five feet for R four subdivisions that are developed after December eighth, twenty twenty. Again, that's going to be the adoption date of, of this. So as long as they meet the standards in nine oh two point two point K, point two point B lot drainage, which are for lots less than seven and a half, less than seven, seven and a half foot side setbacks. Additionally, um, it prohibits the use of a side entry walkway. And that's consistent with that variance that we brought forward to you all, so because one of the conditions on that variance is that they were not going to put a, a side entry walkway in the five and seven. Section five twenty-two connected city MPD. This one just basically explains, in the connected city MPD, it only allows, uh, um, the applicant to use the brain light process currently. So now this will allow, uh, the applicant to also use the other reading processes, not just the brain light process. So it gives, um, it gives further allowances to the applicant to use other processes that are not necessarily the brain light process. They can use the regular reading process in connected city. Section five twenty-one C one neighborhood commercial districts. It adds fitness centers as permitted principal uses, so like, as you drive around castle, you'll see that there are gyms in C one, but that's not a permitted use in C one, so it's just, that is a neighborhood commercial use, the use of a gym, so we, we add that as a, as a permitted principal use. Five twenty-five point, five twenty-five C one neighborhood commercial. Again, you're going to see this as a, as a theme throughout, it adds the sale of alcoholic beverages as a permitted principal use. They're no lock conditional uses, that's stricken out, subject to the, um, the, an administrative use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages. So it'll state that's subject to compliance with four oh two point five point D. Section five twenty-six C two general commercial. This one, it clarifies, when we worked on land development code amendment twenty-five, we've seen that there were a lot of contractors' offices throughout the county. And we added contractor's office as a principal permitted use in C two, because that's where they were going in, it was only allowed in C prepack back then. But in error, as a spriggers error, it's, the, the use is actually called contractor's office and storage. It still has a development standard that everything has to be screened for view, uh, there has to be, um, buffering. We, we're just adding the word and storage to the use. So it's, it's a spriggers error. Five twenty-six C two, it adds the sale of alcoholic beverages as a prin- as a permitted principal use, again, and see the common theme throughout, strikes conditional use as it as a principal permitted use. C three, five twenty-seven, uh, commercial light manufacturing, did it, adds the sale of alcoholic beverages as a permitted principal use. Section five twenty-eight, I one land industrial park district, again, adds sale of alcoholic beverages as a permitted principal use. Section five twenty-nine, I two general industrial park district. That section specifically states that, unless otherwise stated in this code, all, um, permitted uses and special exception uses and I born, well, I line has no special exception uses, so we're striking through the word special exception uses, because it's spriggers error again. Section five thirty supplemental regulations, five thirty point one four, applicability of this code to the sale of alcoholic beverages. It strikes and reserves this section, so in other words, as I stated, everything in that section is going into four oh two point five point D. The section's just reserved, so if we want to use the section for another purpose in the future, it just strikes and reserves the section. Section five thirty, here's another thing that came to the planning commission, so you guys are the trailblazers on all this. Session five thirty supplemental regulations, five thirty point one five for terminal lodges and social and recreational clubs. I don't know if you recall, earlier this year, we had, um, the, uh, the, I don't know if it was the Eagles, one of the recreation, one of the social recreational yoga clubs in a C two district requiring to have a fifty-foot setback, well, why is that? I mean, they're, it's, it's, it's a commercial district. So basically what we're doing is that we're clarifying that performance standards for that section, um, if they're in PO two, C one, C two, C three, or MPDs that are designated that way, that they, they follow the standards for those districts. So a twenty-five foot setback, front setback, it could C two, you know, so on and so forth. And not have to be those, those, uh, performance standards that are listed on them that are very antiquated, but they do make sense for an, a, uh, a fraternal lodge that may be going in an AR, uh, district. So again, that's another, um, variance that was brought to the planning commission and we told them we were going to be changing the code, so here we are changing the code. Most of these are in a shopping center anyway, so it just doesn't make sense to make them meet those sections. Okay, so section five thirty, again, the, um, continuing on with the fraternal lodges. Um, back then, when this section was written many, many years ago, we didn't have a landscape ordinance. So all, I just, we're basically crossing out the landscaping and buffering that's telling us that needs to be done, which is less than what the landscape ordinance asks. And we're just basically stating, um, in accordance with nine oh five point two and with the, with the project being considered a commercial project, that way if it's commercial to residential, there's, there's a significant buffer. Following item is chapter seven hundred subdivision and plating standards. Again, this is a big spriggers error, when, um, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the concept of a platen I. So now there's four types of flats. So the section says there's three, there's four, so this is a spriggers error. Section nine oh one point one transportation order spacing. It removes, um, nine oh one point two point I designation waiver from relief procedures. The session is no longer used, it was stricken through. Nine oh one point two, transportation order management, it removes a requirement for interim uses to obtain approval by the planning commission. It combines the interim use section, so it groups them all together. Right now, the sections are split into, uh, not related to a primary use, not related to, to a primary use, they're all put together. Additionally, we remove the phrase in residential zones from the list of permitted interim uses. For, so landscaping can be an interim permitted, um, can be an interim use as an alternative standard in a non-residential or residential zone. So it clarifies, also it clarifies a discontinued for interim uses at the beginning of the fiscal year in which monies for acquisition, right wing, or construction within the transportation order are first programmed by either the county, in year one of the county's five-year CIP, or in year one of the FDOT, five through TIP. Again, combined, since those two sections are being combined, the conditions for interim uses are also being combined, it removes nine oh one point two J, as we've heard before, and it renames it to nine oh one point two I. And, um, the dedic- then there's a dedication, it's, it renames it, and now it's called nine oh one point two I, dedication proportionality, sorry about that. Section nine oh one point two transportation order management. Again, nine oh one point two I dedication waiver is stricken in its entirety, and nine oh one point two point I becomes dedication or proportionality, as they stated before. Following, nine oh one point two transportation order management. Section nine oh one point two point K waivers administrative variances is renamed to nine oh one point two J administrative variances as waivers are no longer processed. Section nine oh five point two landscaping and buffering. It just adds and or to the landscape requirements for terminal islands, currently it just uses the term and, so we want their person to be able to do the or, because otherwise you have to put all these things into the landscape island, and that makes no sense. Nine oh five point two landscaping and buffering, okay, told you that already. Nine oh five point two point D, this one is really interesting, it's, it's a true spriggers error. So we have an actual table that basically states that for lots that are less than six thousand square feet, you need one tree, well, what about if the lot is six thousand square feet? It excludes it. So now the table will say lots six thousand square feet or less, so it includes six thousand. Alright, so nine oh five point two point D point A landscaping and buffering, specific planting requirements, specific standards. Clarifies that the minimum number of trees on the lot can be counted towards the minimum number of replacement inches and the minimum caliber and height for, for counting replacement inches. As I'm told by my colleagues, this is very difficult without a clarification. It's difficult for both the people who are, um, working on projects and are, um, you know, submitting information, and it's also difficult for the technicians to review it, so this one, this provides greater clarity. Section nine oh five point two point D point four landscaping and buffering building perimeters. It consolidates the term apartment condominium and townhomes, townhome into the term multifamily. Section one zero zero three gates, fences and walls, it clarifies that governmental exemption in the section. And it's for, for gates, fences and wa- walls that are owned or erected by Pasco County or any state or federal government agency. Right now, it just says government agency, so it's not clear. Section eleven oh one vehicle dealerships. It clarifies the applicability section and removes the statement regarding locations that cannot meet the seventy-five foot buffer. In this way, now this will be, uh, an alternative standard can be applied for. Section eleven oh two large-scale commercial design standards. There's, uh, there's some issue, the intent and purpose section has some mentions to conflict policy whether it's a law or a conflict. Section eleven oh five self-storage facilities. The map that's included in there, there's a spriggers error, it includes Ridge Road as a corridor, and Ridge Road's not one of the corridors, so it removes Ridge Road. Section twelve oh four point two non-conforming lots. It provides guidance in determining an equitable front and rear setback, so right now it just says that as determined equitable by the zoning administrator. But in the change, it basically states, this is how you look, you look two hundred feet and look at all others. So it's, it's, it's easier to, to, uh, to deal with, uh, twelve oh four point two with the, the way that the change is coming to make. Appendix A definitions, airport facility definition, there is a, in, in erroneously can also contain the definition of airport obstruction. So we're just deleting that, that sentence. And then also, um, alcoholic beverage business establishment definition, we need to, uh, delete the reference to chapter five hundred because it's the longer in chapter five hundred, it's now in four oh two point five point. So, thank you so much for listening, um, it's, I know it's a lot of changes. So we are asking that you find the proposed ordinance consistent with the Pasco County compliance and plan and recommend approval of the ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners. I am here for any questions, this will be going to the Board of County Commissioners for first reading on November seventeenth at one, November fifteenth, I'm sorry, at one thirty in D.C. And for adoption on December eighth, twenty, at one thirty in New Bridge.
Denise, on that section eleven oh one?
Yes.
Um, can you clarify for me what that means about the seventy-five foot buffer?
Basically, um, in section eleven oh one, just trying to find the map. Just wanted to use the exact language that's used in the section. So the section talks about that there's these, these different corridors, there's transit quarters, there's redevelopment corridors, there are all these different quarters, and Ridge Road was inadvertently, um, included as one of the corridors, and it's not the quarter. So basically, the, the map is entitled North Forty-One, East Fifty-Two Redevelopment and Transit Border Map. So the, the map incorrectly listed Ridge Road as one of those, and it should not have listed Ridge Road. So Ridge Road is off that, that map.
Okay, so, um, is US nineteen on that map, but what, what is the seventy-five feet from where? What's, where's the buffer?
Seventy-five feet is for, for, that's a different section, seventy-five feet is for, um, for the set, the buffer requirements between, um, uh, vehicle dealerships and residential property. That's, that's a different section.
Okay, so that's remaining the same?
No, so basically the way that the code reads- No, so basically the way that the code reads now, that's in the Auto Dealership Ordinance, so the, the way the code reads now is that places that cannot meet the 75-foot buffer cannot be, cannot be used. So it doesn't give the applicant or the, the holder the possibility of applying for a alternative standard. So by striking that section out, it just basically allows the person to, you still have to meet the 75-foot buffer, but it doesn't, it says places that cannot meet the 75-foot buffer. So we're just trying, striking that part out, the places that cannot meet the 75-foot buffer.
Okay, so there's no appeal there, is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct, as it is right now, there's no appeal, it's just, the, the code is prohibitive, there's no appeal. At this point, then, someone could apply for an alternative standard. Let's say that the alternative standard is not granted, they can appeal the alternative, the non-granting of the alternative standard. Or vice versa, if the alternative standard is granted, then they can, you know.
Okay, so they can't apply for an alternative standard, yeah. Okay.
I do want to also say that our, our colleagues in Current Planning are also working with the industry to, to, to make some modifications to the landscape section. So I think that eventually what's gonna happen is that there's going to be a specific type of buffer for auto dealers, that's more, it's not the 75-foot necessarily.
Okay. Alright, any other questions?
Denise, the 1,000-foot buffer for alcohol sales from a school. So you said something about administratively decided, or?
No, 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 the waiver is an actual public hearing.
Okay.
So if the applicant comes in and answers the question or checks the box or as we verify and we find it's 1,000 feet from a place of religious worship, a K through 12 public or private school or county park, then you tell them, well, you have to apply for a waiver, and the waiver's a public hearing.
Okay, and that comes, and that's gonna come to here now?
It would have to come to the Planning Commission. And just to be very clear also, that is for the places that do consumption of drinks.
Right, right.
Like your house, yeah. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
No, you have to.
How about a motion to approve? Jamie, Gerardi, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second Chris Poole.
I thought, I thought, I thought you already approved it.
Chris approved it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Chris Poole did.
I seconded it.
Oh, okay.
It was a good try though, Charlie.
Any further discussion? I think we've already had the discussion, all in favor? Signify by roll call.
Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Siz.
Aye.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Now we can get out of here, huh? Okay, there are a motion, Jamie?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're out of here, thank you.